Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lackawanna City Council September 23rd, 2024 City Council Meeting Caucus. Caucus is our opportunity as council members to discuss amongst ourselves the various agenda items. So we, as a council, will review those now. Afterwards, we'll move directly to the formal meeting for September 23rd. The first several items are administrative, moving to communications from Division Department Heads. Number four, from a city attorney, request City Council approve memorandum of understanding between city and Erie County Sewer District and authorize mayor to sign the same. The memorandum was attached. This is a standard agreement between the city and Erie County regarding the sewer district. It's boilerplate standard language and there's nothing significant or impactful on it that I'm aware of. Any council members have any questions or comments on item number four? We on item number five, city attorney again requests City Council approve agreement between the city and Frank Krakowski and authorize the mayor to sign same agreement for training of the staff in the assessor's office for four hours per week at a rate of $41.61 per hour. The agreement runs from September 4th of this year to June 30th of 2025. In speaking with the city attorney who's been excused from today, many people remember that we did pass a resolution authorizing the expenditure of approximately $30,000 to bring in additional help for our associate or acting city assessor so that she could make a transition hopefully to the assessor's position. Bringing back Frank Krakowski would not impact that $30,000 or would not require any further funding. It's the intent of the city to have both the individual Mike Mills who's there from time to time helping the acting city assessor to augment that effort to bring her up to speed. Frank Krakowski would be brought back and would be paid out of that $30,000 fund. So it's my understanding there would be no new expenditures needed, and this is in anticipation of the finalization and development and finalization of the city tax roll, which is required by December 1st, I believe. Any council members have any questions or comments on item number five? Now moving on to item number six, communication from our fire chief, Fiona, request City Council approve bid to award Deval Safety Equipment Inc. an amount of $35,460.85 for firefighting confinement space equipment. This was the only bid received, and 95% of this purchase will be reimbursed. Any council members have comments or questions on item number six? Moving on to item number seven, again from our fire chief, Fiona, request City Council approve an ordinance amending the 24-25 budget to add a new budget code for the assistance to firefighters grant, and that ordinance is attached. Any council members have any comments or questions on item number seven? Item number eight from our Assistant Controller, request City Council through the ordinance transferring $750,000 from unappropriated funds to the snowstorm budget line. This, it's my understanding, is in anticipation of any upcoming storms so that the money might be available in that account should it be needed. And Peggy, anything you want to add to that?
No, like you said, it's just in anticipation. If there is any bad weather, that vendors will be able to be paying timely.
And it is from unappropriated funds, which that balance has been augmented and refilled, so to speak. Any council members have any questions or comments on item number eight? From item number nine, our Assistant Controller, request City Council approve list of transfers to balance all the accounts that were in the red at July 31st, 2024. I'm going to suggest we not necessarily vote on these at the same time, but for discussion purposes, again from our Assistant Controller, item number 10, advises the city pursuant to Chapter 12.12 subdivision C2 of the city charter, a list of transfers was made to balance many of the 23-24 accounts. This was done after review of various departments within City Hall. And again, Peggy, for public consumption, anything you want to add? It means a clarification, especially in light of the fact that we did something similar a meeting or two meetings ago. As time goes on, these accounts apparently get reconciled.
Because we were out of rotation for our annual audit, the ones that you just did recently was for a prior audit, these ones, because we're getting back on schedule, is for the year that just ended, July 31st of 24. So the audit is scheduled to start mid-October, so this is for 23-24, the most current fiscal year that just wrapped up.
Thank you. And there's no additional funds that are being applied from the general fund or the...
No, this is just moving appropriations that have already been budgeted. So it's moving from one budget line to another.
Thank you. Any council members have any comments or questions? All right. Moving on to item number 11, from our senior foreman, Public Works, Stan Burke, and request City Council through ordinance transfer funds in the sale of Elgin Street Sweeper scrap vehicle in the amount of $8,175. Dan, anything you want to add to that?
No, this was just a piece of equipment that was approved at a previous council meeting to be scrapped. It just took us a little while to find a place to take it because it's a specialty vehicle, a street sweeper, a regular, a scrapyard wouldn't take it, but we found a company to purchase it.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, go ahead.
What year was this?
2001.
Oh, okay. Is this the one that was in the accident?
No. No, this vehicle hasn't worked in the past two years.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions or comments on item number 11? If not, there's an accompanying ordinance to that, number 11. Moving on to item number 12, from Chief of Police, packet requests, City Council approve the ordinance creating budget line for the law enforcement technology grant received to the Department of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $130,400. Peggy, is there anything you want to add on that?
Just that we have received the money in already, so we're going to, the ordinance is to create the budget line for them to be able to spend out of that budget.
Are there any city matching funds or anything like that, fronting funds?
Not kind of, actually.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any council members have any questions or comments on item number 12? There's an accompanying ordinance to that, item number 12 also. There's been a request, the last been a request to waive the rules from Mayor Ifallow and Fourth Ward Councilmember Sirdike. Councilman Sirdike, do you want to discuss this at all at this time?
Sure. As you know, in the past, we had problems with parking in that area, and we eliminated parking on Josie. Rumors come from students parking their litter in, causing student burnouts, whatever, parking near the fire hydrants. It's been an ongoing problem. So when we closed Josie, they just moved to Shannon. So it's an ongoing problem. There's, I don't know, there's no parking at the school. You take a ride through there in the morning, I mean, it's packed, they're parking all over. We were talking about it earlier, KND, you know, every, when we went to school, nobody had cars.
Yeah.
And, you know, now the kids are driving cars, and we didn't have any student aids or teacher aids and all that. So they have a massive parking problem over there, so hopefully this will alleviate it. If not, we'll have to go to the next street, do the next street down here. I appreciate you guys' authority for this.
And it's not necessarily an enforcement issue. I know the police have been down there trying to enforce that. Just something that we need to deal with, however we can deal with it. All right, so it'll be a two-step process. One will be either approving or not approving, waiving the rules, and if it's approved, then we take up this request for this ordinance, this no parking ordinance between the school hours on Shannon Drive. Any council members, other council members have any comments or questions?
I would, I do support this request. I just have one issue in regards to the residents. Will they be properly informed of all the parking, no parking during that time for, especially, I know there's elderly that have, like, home visiting nurses that go to their homes early in the morning, so just that they're aware of that.
I think, and I asked that question of the mayor when she contacted me, because she and Councilmember Sirdike were interested in putting this on the agenda, and I did ask that question. I said, are all the residents on Shannon being made aware that this may be taking place? And she said they were the ones complaining, so, yeah.
Right, I mean, not every single person is going to be aware of the complaint, not every person complained, just so that it's a broad, you know, covering the basis, prove that one person that wasn't aware, so they can inform their guests that we visit.
I'm sure it'll be placed on the website, hopefully. Any other comments? Not on communications from citizens, Van Taylor Public Relations, Western New York Veterans, again, annual Veterans Day Parade, we usually waive any fees regarding that. Anyone have any questions or comments from the City Council on item number 13? If not, moving on to business registration, Mansour Sala, Baraka Eats and Treats Restaurant, 119 Wilkes-Barre Avenue, everything seems to be in order there. Any comments or questions from the council on that? If not, then I will formally call the order of the council meeting for September 23rd, 2024. We rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. But I ask the Assistant Clerk to call the roll.
Maflahee, President Anderson, Moretti.
Here.
Sirdike.
President.
Morano.
Here.
Law Department, Devol and Marketing and Recreation have been excused. Public Works.
Here.
Public Safety.
Here.
Assistant Controller.
Here.
Okay, as far as hearing from citizens, we have two individuals who wish to address the council. Normally, there's about three minutes to address the council. You're welcome to come forward to the podium and make any comments. The first individual is Angela Judd.
Can we just follow the order?
It's the same concept, yeah. It's on the same order.
Somebody needs to come up and address the council. You sign the request to speak.
Okay, so my name is Angela, and the reason why I'm here today is because I'm trying to find out why Officer Krakowski is no longer a resource officer at high school and middle school, or my children attack. Last year, my daughter was sexually assaulted, and she went to him because she is familiar with him. And this happened in school property, on school grounds. And yes, the individual is taken care of, but the kids feel safe with him. Why is he not a presence in the school now? Like, my daughter's in high school, she says there's three officers that walk their side, but there's no officers that walk the same grounds in the middle school. There's no consistency with the presence there.
You do understand the council doesn't assign the officers. We can only listen to what your...
Right, and I understand that, but I'm just trying to figure out why all of a sudden he was such a big hit last year. He was in the news, he brought good news to Lackawanna, and all of a sudden, he's no longer a presence whatsoever.
I don't believe any of us council members have an answer for you. Eric and Morano, do you have anything about this?
I know that PJ was discussing that with the officer about them, and apparently the school board is kind of dragging their feet on getting something together, whether it be contractually or however, to get him back in the school. He's waiting.
Yeah, I'm up on this. I was talking to our lawyer today, and we're trying to work out a contract with the school. The last contract we had with them wasn't very beneficial to the city as far as he's there for 10 months, they weren't paying their fair share the way that I thought or the way that the city position is now. And he said they were close Friday night to getting an agreement, it would have been on today's agenda, but then the school board or whatever, they're still, they're close. It'll probably be on the next meeting. He'll be back in there.
So Angela, maybe a suggestion would be to go to the school board meeting and...
Unfortunately, I'm a lost driver. I wasn't able to make that meeting.
Yeah.
This one I was able to, because it was at 6:30.
I did attend the school board meeting that addressed this, and there were other parents that were concerned, and the buzz around the city, there's a grave concern for this. And, yes, and the school board made it very clear that it is in their best interest to renew the contract, and they understand the, not just the camaraderie that he brings and the morale, but the safety that he brings as well, and the safety that the kids find in him. So it's not like they're slashing the budget, saying this is not something that we're interested in or willing to entertain any further. There is a proposal on the table. The school board is aware of the terms of the contract. We did approve this two years ago, the same board that you see in front of us today, in front of you today. We approved SOR at the Lackawanna Schools based on the terms of that time. So now the ball is in the school board's field right now, so.
Okay. So then you suggest, sorry, hi, I'm Lynn Bader. So you suggest we go to the next school board meeting?
I don't know if I'm in the position to make any recommendations. I could just tell you what I'm aware of, and I also did speak with the SRO, and that's how I was informed of the situation. But as of right now, the contract is pending based on the school approving it or rejecting it. So you take it for what it's worth and figure out what your next steps are as far as where you would want to take it.
Okay, do you foresee it happening soon? Because he is very missed.
I'm in no position to, in the school. I'm sure he is. I've heard it not just from parents, but from my own nieces and nephews. His absence is definitely noticed, so I can't give a timeline. I don't know if any of my colleagues can, but...
Because what we're hearing, like, you go to the school board, and then it's, oh, it's in the city council's hands, and then you come here, and then you say it's in the school board's hands.
Until it's brought to our attention. When you see it on the agenda, that's when we vote on it. Until then, we have no, we have no authority.
There's nothing pending for us right now.
The impression I got today was it's almost a done deal, so, like I said...
So it'll be on next agenda?
Hopefully, it'll be in October 7th.
Or sooner, if they approve it. I mean, if there's anything special that comes to us.
Well, it would be at a regular meeting, so...
Or what I also understood was if there's a provisional appointment, but that's not up to us, or not that...
Yeah, but I mean, for us to approve the contract would be at the next meeting, unless there's a special meeting.
Correct.
I don't anticipate that happening, but it could happen. So maybe by October 7th, we'll have something...
Do we know in the next school board meeting yet, by chance?
I don't.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 3rd, 2024.
Renal moves to that minutes, regular meetings, September 23rd, 2024, is written.
Maflahee, seconds. Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to adopt minutes of the regular meeting of September 23rd, 2024, is written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Departmental reports, 1 through 3?
Renal moves to receive and file departmental reports, 1, 2, 3, 1 through 3 inclusive.
Maflahee, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to receive and file departmental reports, 1 through 3. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. City Attorney requests the City Council approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and Erie County Sewer District and authorize the mayor to sign same memorandum as attached.
Renal moves to approve the memorandum of understanding and for the mayor to sign same.
Maflahee, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to approve the memorandum of understanding and for mayor to sign same. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. City Attorney requests the City Council approve the agreement between the city and Frank Krakowski and authorize the mayor to sign same. The agreement is for training of the staff in the assessor's office for four hours per week at a rate of $41.61. The term of the agreement is September 4th, 24 through June 30th of 2025.
Renal moves to approve agreement and for the mayor to sign same.
Anderson, seconds.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to approve the agreement and for mayor to sign same. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Fire Chief requests the City Council approve the bid award to Deval Safety Equipment Inc. in the amount of $35,460.85 for firefighting confined space equipment. This was the only bid received. 95% of this purchase will be reimbursed by the Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Renal moves to approve bid award to Deval Safety Equipment. Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to approve bid award to Deval Safety Equipment. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Fire Chief requests the City Council approve the ordinance amending the 24-25 budget to add a new budget code for the Assistance to Firefighters Grant.
Renal moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2024-2025 budget to establish a new budget code to accommodate the Assistance to Firefighters Grant in the amount of $37,522.79 for firefighting confined space equipment. The city will not be required to advance any funds for this grant.
Renal moves to adopt ordinance is written.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Assistant Controller requests the City Council approve the ordinance transferring $755,000 from unappropriated fund balance to the Snowstorm Budget Line.
Renal moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance amending the 2024-2025 budget to transfer from the unappropriated fund balance the amount of $750,000 to budget code Snowstorm.
Renal moves to adopt ordinance is written.
Anderson, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Anderson, to adopt ordinance as written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Assistant Controller requests the City Council approve the list of transfers to balance all of the accounts that were in the red at July 30th, 2024.
Renal moves to approve list of transfers. Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to approve the list of transfers. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Assistant Controller advises the City Council pursuant to Chapter 12.12 subdivision C2 of the city charter that a list of transfers was made to balance many of the 2023-2024 accounts. This was done after review of the various departments within City Hall.
Renal moves to receive and file.
Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Maflahee, to receive and file. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Senior Foreman of Public Works requests the City Council approve the ordinance to transfer funds from the sale of the Elgin Street Sweeper scrap vehicle in the amount of $8,175.
Renal moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Moretti, second.
Motion by Morano, second by Moretti, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Chief of Police requests the City Council approve the ordinance creating a budget line for the law enforcement technology grant received through the Department of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $130,400.
Renal moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Chief of Police requests the City Council approve the ordinance creating a budget line for the law enforcement technology grant received through the Department of Criminal Justice Services in the amount of $130,400.
Renal moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Request to waive the rules.
Maflahee moves to waive the rules.
Morano, seconds.
Motion by Maflahee, second by Morano, to waive the rules. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. Mayor Ifallow and Fourth Ward Councilmember Sirdike requests the City Council approve the traffic and vehicle ordinance, no parking on Shannon Drive.
Renal moves to receive and file Act on Ordinance.
Second, Sirdike.
Motion by Morano, second by Sirdike, to receive and file Act on Ordinance. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?
Yes.
Sirdike?
Yes.
Morano?
Yes.
Carry 5-0. An ordinance amending Chapter 215, Traffic and Vehicles of the City of Lackawanna Municipal Code, specifically Chapter 60.43, by adding the following. Section 194, Shannon Drive, no parking anytime, east, west, north, or south on Shannon Drive, Monday through Friday between 6:30 a.m. and 3:30 p.m.
Motion to adopt the ordinance is written, please.
Maflahee, seconds.
Motion by Sirdike, second by Maflahee, to adopt ordinance is written. Maflahee?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Moretti?